Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order tonight, September 17th, 2024, the Urmoe Town Council. And first thing up will be a public hearing, and that public hearing will be to receive comments on ordinance 2412 to approve a development agreement for the proposed water walk subdivision located at the intersection of Drea Shoals Road, Salem Church Road, and Muskrat Run. I have a sign up list, and before we get into that, I'm going to ask everyone to understand our civility pledge and understand that these...I'm going to give you some brief rules as to what you can and can't do. First of all, you're allowed three minutes. There'll be no ceding of your time to another speaker. When that red light comes on, we would kindly ask you to wrap up and sit down. It would be great if you spoke at the public hearing portion, you didn't feel the need to get back up again and speak at the agenda portion with the same subject matter. If it's something completely different, that would be great, but that's up to you. I would ask you not to do that. And there will be strict decorum here tonight. There will be no shouting from the crowd, no applauding, no cheering. We will deal with everyone with disrespect...with respect and no disrespect. There are folks in here that may want to speak on an opposite side of you and could be...could be felt to be bullied by that kind of behavior. So I ask that you all be respectful and play by the rules. If not, there are other ways that we can handle that, and I certainly don't want that to have to happen. So, first up, Sharon Chase.
My name's Sharon Chase. I live at 103 Belmont Drive, which is off of Salem Church Road. I do not like the idea of this development. I have many concerns, and I just thought I would address a couple of them tonight. One of the main ones is this idea of build to rent. On its face, it does not sound American to me. It sounds very un-American. Our country was built on the premise that everyone could be a homeowner. People have come here from all over the world because of that promise, that if you worked hard, you would own your own home. It's what has driven our people to live in the way that they have to build a society that we have. So what's changed? Again, this idea of build to rent. As for the vetting of those that would be coming in on the rental side of this development? We've been assured by the developers that they would be vetted, credit checks, background checks, all of that sort of thing, and I'm sure that's true. And the first generation of renters, that will certainly be true. But what about the third generation of renters? The fourth generation of renters? Those same people will not be in place that does the vetting in the first generation. And so that concerns me down the road, the future of those who would be renting. They have no investment in their property. They are not invested as we homeowners are invested. And I know that not everybody can have a big house, and rental is sometimes their only option. But to build a whole development, build to rent, does not seem appropriate to me. Salem Church and all its neighborhoods that run off of it, there was one road in and the same road to depart from. That's it. There's no outlets on any of the side roads. That's what makes us very unique and specific. It gives me, as a senior citizen, great comfort in recognizing I have safety. People that often look for cut-throughs and that sort of thing don't have that ability on Salem Church Road. And my-
Ms. Chase, your time is up. Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Next up, Pam Selkinghaus.
Very good pronunciation. Pam Selkinghaus, 1944 Marina Road. I am a lifelong resident of the area. I studied risk management at the University of South Carolina. I'm recently retired from county government. I have given risk management and safety advice to public entities in the states of North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia for over 30 years. We have all talked about the traffic and what this proposed development will do to our already overburdened infrastructure. There is supposed to be a traffic study. Y'all said there was going to be a traffic study. This development should not be allowed to move forward until the traffic study is completed. For those of you who don't know or choose to look the other way, there was a head-on collision out there at that intersection of Salem Church and Drea Shoals Road just two weeks ago, a head-on collision. I fail to understand how the town can move forward on this project when they are clearly putting the public safety at risk. Do tax dollars and bonus densities, which to me, the bonus density looks like a slush fund for town projects, do those mean more to you than the public's safety? I think the town should be held accountable for the traffic hazards you are creating for your citizens. Please consider the safety of the community stakeholders ahead of this reckless growth and destruction of our infrastructure. Don't vote yes until the traffic study is completed and the proper infrastructure is in place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gerald Galler.
Sir, the sign up was a little bit confusing. If I'm allowed the same amount of time during the actual agenda that comes up-
That's fine.
...in this instance, I would prefer we-
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sharon?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. Let me see. Is this Dawn Holterwanger?
Uh, I'm on the phone.
Okay. Adriana Hall. Adriana, you here?
I'm here, but I think she didn't mean it.
Didn't mean it. Okay. Jeffrey, how about you?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Hall. I live at 23 Green Ash Court in Urmoe, right there behind Tavern on the Sixth. Been here about 12 years. And my concern is just to reiterate the issue with the traffic. I understand in addition to the water walk development, we also got a Cassis Chicken going to go right in next to Tavern on the Sixth, and it's really hard to even get out of our neighborhood. Just to get to the Publix from there, I have to take a right 75% of the time and go all the way around because it's that bad. I mean, this is...like, I agree with the infrastructure comment. I think this is where we got to go, do something with the infrastructure before we expand and add more people. I mean, for me to have to take a right to go to Publix, living right there, it's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. But I do it because I don't want to get hit. It's too dangerous. That's all I have to say. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Rojas? Katie?
I don't want to talk to you.
I know this isn't...Henry? Martin?
Henry? Henry?
What it says?
You don't know anything about that?
Nope.
Henry?
I said Henry.
I thought you said Henrik.
No. I said Henry. Mar-
I need to get my ears checked. Good evening, guys and ladies, council. Again, I want to say that I've said every time that I've got up here and speak, I appreciate what everybody does in volunteering for what you do. It's not an easy job. Not everybody does it. A lot of people will want to stand out here and make comments, but I have tried very hard, very hard, as you've seen from the notes that I've sent to all of you, to investigate and determine what might be true and not true about what's going on. One of the big things that I brought up in my notes to you on September the 8th email was the fact that the problem is not today. The problem is in 2007, when this property was allowed to move from Richland as rural to RG max density in Urmoe. That's not your problem, but it is your problem. So what Richland County did with their latest land development code was they make it more the "min" factor, where they are allowed to say, hey, Kay, you want to build in there? Then, you know, you tell us what you want to build, and then you decide whether it's in the character of the property that's going in there. So I would advise you, the guys, to look at that going forward, that you would start to do that more than to allow people to come in, because they were turned down by Richland County in 2005 at RU. Came to...in Richland County, they wanted to do something differently with that property, higher density, and Richland County said, we ain't going to do it, and they came to Urmoe. So the deal is, is what's in the notes of the Planning Commission then is that Chairman Rowe stated that he wanted the commission to stay consistent with the assignment zoning of parcels that have been annexed by the town. He stated that a lot of times, property owners requested a particular type of zoning from the town and has already been turned down by the county. He stated they didn't want the commission to take zoning assignments lightly and need to be consistent with what is currently in the surrounding area. That was not done. Okay? I'm just asking you to please, please consider that in the future. When you do your Vision 2035, you start taking hold of what's out there. Because I'm sure that Dawn and Jerry didn't know when they built that they were sitting next to a time bomb, that 711 units could go in there, because it was RG allowed amid sitting there till, I guess, the sewer line came in. The other thing I want to say is the traffic. We've discussed about that. It's going to be discussed till the end. And Urmoe and every other town always says that traffic is not your problem. The people before you have always said traffic's not the problem, and given out misinformation about when the traffic, like Broad River, is going to be done. But ultimately, you have to be involved in that traffic. Somebody sits on the cog today, and what I would ask you is that we need to get together and figure out how we can go after the cog, petition, get all these people that have a problem with traffic and say, let's go do it. Let's march on the cog and get our priorities put back on there. Not say that the road should have been done 20 years ago when it got turned down, or 10 years ago when the study came out from Webber Smith and said it should be widened, or was planned to be widened. Nothing's happened. So something's got to change, and we need Urmoe to lead that effort. That's what I'd like to ask you.
Thank you, Henry. Connie Turner?
Good evening. I'm Connie Turner. Thank you for the work that you do. I live at 200 Hope Trace Way, and I'm here to express concerns about the traffic. The original staff proposal was to deny this request, and it was based on concerns with traffic and that there would be a traffic impact study. To date, that's not been done, and the recommendation has been to approve it, but I did not see in the packet tonight what prompted the change in the recommendation. So that's one concern. With 6% to 7% increase in the population in the town in that one small area, one can expect increased traffic of 6% to 7% of the town's traffic. That's in the packet that you all should have in there. Also, the character of Urmoe. We all love Urmoe because it's a rural area close to a very urban area. The project itself says it's for an urban area. Urmoe's not urban. We like it the way it is. We're not opposed to commercial development. I'll only speak for myself. I'm not opposed to commercial development or apartments or any of the type of development we're talking about. We're talking about keeping it in character with what we have and growing the beautiful gem that we have here in Urmoe so that our children and future generations can enjoy what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Okay, that's the lineup for anything on the public hearing. I will ask if anybody else has a comment that hasn't signed up. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and we will begin our agenda with our call to order and the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Who wants to lead? Okay, councilman?
I would plead to disqualify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, we're home here. It's 49. Open march to your wisdom. We ask your presence, the guide, the counsel, and our work. Bless everyone who is here. We ask to give us patience, standing, ability to serve our community with humility and dedication, but also ask you march over our national leaders, the great strength of faith, wisdom, passion. In all the decisions made, please for the greater good, for the greater peace, and all that we do, for our nation to be great.
Okay, we're going to call for an approval of the agenda. If I can hear a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to move on to reading of the minutes for August 20th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a call for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. That's passed. We're going to go to Report of Standing, Administrative Briefing, and our town administrator is down with COVID. So, ours...I'm sorry, September 3rd meeting. Reading of the minutes?
So moved?
Is there a motion?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Sorry, I got ahead of myself there, trying to get to why you're all here. The Report of Standing. Doug, could you tell us if you have an update?
Sure. The only thing that we really have, it is in the administrative briefing, but I spoke with Courtney earlier today, and he wanted to point out especially that we are currently wrapping up Rawls Creek. It is effectively done at this point, and if you go out there and look at it, it looks tremendous compared to what it did a couple months ago. But we will have our ribbon cutting, hopefully, on October 18th at 10:00 a.m. And so that'll...it'll be on our community communications next month, but we just wanted to make sure everyone knows that it's looking great and can't wait to open it up.
Thank you. Any questions for him on that? All right. Thank you, Doug. New in-town business. Councilman?
New in-town business is South Ground Supply Company, diverse beauty and supplies, and massage by Christie. Welcome to the town.
Thank you, councilman, and welcome to those folks who are here. All right, right now, if you'll all go down...come down front with me. I'd like to make a presentation.
So we're renaming another part of the area?
Okay. As you all know by now, every month, we select...we...I would have selected this one. We, as a council, recognize Small Business of the Month, and this month, I would like to call up Melissa Busby and Lurie Evans. Come on down, please. Say aye. Okay, what this says is presented to Will Haven Home Care in recognition of being a Small Business of the Month for the Town of Urmoe, September 2024. Congratulations, ladies, and we're going to take some pictures here, I think. Here, you go.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, tell us a little bit about Will Haven.
Thank you. So, Will Haven, we are 38 years old. We're a concierge and home care provider, meaning that we take care of people in their homes when they need a little bit of help to do so, and they don't want to go to assisted living. We also care for people after they have surgeries of any sort. We really do anything that you want us to do. And we were downtown Columbia for a long time. Parking was horrible. It wasn't safe, and we could not be part of a true community. So when the space opened up behind the CBS drive thru, we were so excited to move to Urmoe, and we want to say thank you so much for welcoming us in. Thank you for the honor of being the Small Business of the Month. And please come by and see us if you have any questions about home care. Just pop in. We love visitors. Thank you.
Full disclosure, she's a dear friend.
All right, next item, the update on the Spectrum easement request. And I could go into a long diatribe about that, but I'm going to save that for later. The easement request, Doug, would you like to bring us up to speed? This is on the Bickley Station easement by Spectrum?
I think I'll leave this for Will.
Mr. Mayor-
That's the can getting kicked twice, just in case you all hadn't figured it out.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Great Southern Homes timeframe for when they wanted to complete their homes was shorter than the timeframe Spectrum's legal department was going to need to consider all the changes that the town wanted made to the easement agreement.
Can I stop you there, Will?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it...I'm going back to rudimentary communication processes here. So, we told you to go back. We didn't like that easement-
Yes, sir.
-to go back with certain conditions to protect the citizens of the Town of Urmoe, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And now you're telling me that Spectrum's legal lawyering department can drag their butt longer than it would take for Great Southern Homes to build 66 homes. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was informed by Spectrum.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
And therefore, Spectrum decided to use an existing easement that they had through Lexington County for the cable service, fiber optic service for the subdivision. So they're not going to go through the park.
Okay. So they're not...the easement's dead. It's done, but they'll still continue their work through an existing easement?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. All right. Community Connections. Councilwoman Dr. Waldman, that's a mouthful.
Thank you. The first item is the Historic Columbia Jubilee Festival, the Festival of Black History and Culture, which will be held on Saturday, September 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Man Simons Site, which is at 1403 Richland Street in Columbia. This festival will have music, art, dance, craft vendors, food vendors, and a kid's zone. The next item is a Richland County microchipping event on September 22nd from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is a free service for residents of Richland County. They will microchip cats and dogs. The only restriction is that the animals must be eight weeks or older. And this will be at the Columbia Animal Services at 127 Humane Lane in Columbia. And of course, just as a way of reminder, the Lexington Medical Center, Urmoe Okerstrut, is coming up on September 27th and 28th at Moore Park. The Okerstrut Parade will begin at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, and it will run on St. Andrews Road from Crossroads Intermediate School up to Urmoe Elementary. There are two free pickleball clinics happening at the Harvest and Community Center on September 28th and October 5th. For more information about these free pickleball clinics, contact the Harvest and Community Center. As you may know, there's District 5 school board elections coming up in November, and the teacher forum is holding school board candidate forums on October 1st for the Richland County candidates, and on October 8th for the Lexington County candidates. Both forums will be held from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The Richland County candidates will be at the Center for Advanced Technical Studies, and the Lexington County candidates will be at Urmoe Middle School. You can submit questions for the candidates to answer at the forums by going to tinyurl.com/lr5forum. The Friars Gate Community Connections will meet again on Thursday, October 3rd at Friars Gate Park at 6:30 p.m. The topics to be covered are updates on code enforcement activities, update on policing activities, and presentation on waste removal services. On October 19th at Moore Park from 9:00 a.m. to noon, there will be the Hush No More Domestic Violence Awareness Family Walk and Health Fair. This is a free event, but they ask that you register by September 24th if you'd like to get a t-shirt and medal for participating in the walk. On October 31st at Moore Park, the Urmoe Events Committee is hosting an Urmoe Trunk or Treat. I'm sure you'll see more information about that in the near future. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. again, and that is in Moore Park. 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. again, and that is in Moore Park. And I have one more item that isn't on a slide here, but on Sunday, October 13th at 4:00 p.m., there will be a presentation on the Irma Area Oral History Project at Pine Grove A.M.E. Church, which is at 120 Stewart Drive, Columbia. This is a joint project of McGregor Presbyterian Church, Pine Grove A.M.E. Church, and the USC Libraries. It's also been funded by a grant from the South Carolina Humanities Council. Again, that's October 13th at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dr. Waldman. Okay, next up on the agenda will be unfinished business. Seeing as we have none, we will move to new business. And the new business will be first reading of Ordinance 2412 to approve a development agreement for the Water Walk development pursuant to the South Carolina--
Mr. Mayor, we skipped presentation by citizens.
Okay, sorry. Okay, presentation by citizens. I've got three right here. Gerald, you wanna lead us off?
Certainly, thank you. Good evening. My name is Gerald Galaher. My wife Sharon and I are full-time residents at 101 Muskrat Run. Our primary area of concern with Water Walk is the residential District 3, which is adjacent to the properties on Muskrat Run in Emerald Cove. In Section 7-1.11 of the zoning ordinance, it states, "While single-family detached lot sizes below 6,000 square foot may be considered, Town Council strongly encourages minimums of 6,000 square foot with a maximum density of six detached residential units per gross acre," unquote. None, I repeat, none of the proposed living units in RD3 satisfy this guideline. Neither do the ones in RD1. We on Muskrat Run and Emerald Cove have single-family detached homesteads that we have established to have important personal value for ourselves, along with the family members and friends and guests we welcome. Our concerns include that Muskrat Run is a paved rural road with less than two lanes. It can't handle the extra traffic that's gonna come. Two, paved entrances and turning lanes into RD3 will jeopardize the stability of our utilities that run down on our end. Three, having a construction entrance on Muskrat Run or Salem Church Road is highly concerning to us. Four, the environmental impact to our cove, and likewise, the impact to the boating traffic on our very peaceful and kayak paddleboard-friendly cove. Lastly here, in the end, the developer's goal will naturally be to fill the RD1 rental units with paying customers, fill RD2 senior living units, and sell the RD3 residential units. Merely 27% of the total proposed living units are targeted for sale. The greatest portion, 73%, is targeted to be purely rental units. Having this next to our homes and neighborhood is not a value booster. You, the Town Council members acting on behalf of the citizens of Irma, have a great responsibility. Part of that responsibility is truly listening to its citizens. Counter to what is stated in the staff report, the Planning Commission did not vote to approve the Water Walk project. I was at that meeting, several of you were there as well. It was clearly stated in the motion and the outcome that the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval to rezone the 65.12 acres to a mixed-use zoning designation. The Planning Commission did not vote to approve Water Walk. Even if you feel this rezoning is in the best interest of Irma, that does not mean you must also approve the development agreement for Water Walk. Albeit linked, these are two separate proposed ordinances. Thank you for your time. I have copies of my comments if you're interested as well. I do have a signature page of our neighbors down on Muskrat Run and Emerald Cove that are opposed to the current.
We have it. Give it to Doug, but we also have that.
It's the original of the copy I gave you last night.
Thank you. Karen, do you want to speak?
My name is Dawn Holtwanger. I live at 23 Muskrat Run, Irma. I am the first address on Muskrat Run. I know that residents and citizens are worried about traffic issues, infrastructure overcrowding of schools, and increased need for emergency services that comes with a development this size. These are of the utmost importance. I want to talk about Muskrat Run and Emerald Cove and how this development will affect us at this area it backs up to us. Water Walk is like trying to pack a town into an area that is sizable and suitable for a subdivision. Muskrat Run and Emerald Cove will be bordered by RD3, which is sellable townhomes and duplexes. Many of us have the application packet from the developers submitted by the town. There are a lot of numbers involved, like light size, scare footage, side streets, separation between, et cetera. We are wanting to see an idea of what the plots with housing look like, not, sorry, pictures are louder than words. I know this is only a concept right now, but with all the meetings, there have been some changes. For example, RD2, the senior living area, they have gone from patio homes to apartment without medical needs to a possibility of assisted living. With these changes, you have less traffic with patio homes and apartments than you would in assisted living. We do not want to see any more pictures or examples of type of houses and materials that would be used. Most of the pictured homes presented to us do not match the large amount of the lot sizes available. Most of us on Muskrat Run and Emerald Cove have built forever homes. I know myself and my other residents would have not built if we knew this was coming. The land I am on was purchased by my grandparents in the early 1900s. My aunt, my uncle have been on Salem Church since the 80s. My entire life, Muskrat Run has been a very beautiful, peaceful, serene area. It is this reason why me and my neighbors and myself choose to build and live here. I have concerns about my property, but that's a different story. There's been a lot of talk about why Muskrat Run, and me being right there at the front of it, I have some concerns. This is a very bad idea. All the utilities, first of all, are on that side of the road except for electricity. Where my property line meets this site is a steep curve. Muskrat Run is a paved rural road. There are no, there are times when only one vehicle can pass. This curve is sort of a blind curve because you cannot see what's coming from the opposite direction until you are almost on them. I do not want the road widened to my property line or beyond because blue granite was maxed out when I built. I have an engineered septic system that, the drain field is in front of my house, and the first drain is 30 feet from the opposite side of the pavement. This is on my property and cannot be changed or damaged. Also, there needs to do, there does not need to be any construction entrances on Muskrat Run or Salem Church. This entrance needs to come off Highway 6. Since there are plans to add a third lane to help with this traffic, this should be, should accommodate this entrance. Basically, it is this. We want Irma to be beautiful and proud of. However, we are not willing to lose the things we love the most, our neighborhoods, our homes, peaceful surroundings. We're losing a lot of green space. What will our future generations have? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that's all I have signed up here. If there is anyone else, they could certainly speak now, or you can speak if you haven't spoken after the meeting. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Name and address, please.
My name is Linda Sheizer, and I live at 136 Wells Point in Ballantyne Cove.
Linda, can I just ask you, I got you signed up at the end. You want, you want to go now instead of then?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Fine, thank you.
And my main concern is with this development going up, the traffic. I'm sure that you have experienced the traffic back-to-back from Ballantyne all the way practically to the dam, especially in Fridays, 5 o'clock, and it may be because of the construction on 20 now, but that's going to last, or 26, that's gonna last another 10 years. So, we're not gonna get any relief on that traffic. And with this development coming in, it's gonna be more traffic, and it's just gonna be disastrous. I know a lot of other people have talked about that tonight. You know, I guess I'm just confused about who would be in charge of getting the road widened if this goes through. I mean, is that something that the Town of Irma would do, or is that something that the SC DOT is doing, or how does, how is that going to get approached, or if it's going to get approached? Because I think that's a lot of concern for everybody here, and that's my concern also. Thank you.
We'll clear that up for you before you leave here tonight. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hugh Smith, 267 Emerald Cove Lane. I'm directly beside the project. It's, I mean, something's coming. It's gonna be, I mean, I know it's gonna be good. One main concern for me is the buffer zones. The 25-foot, everything's negotiable after you approve this, right? Pretty much. So, with the developers, there's a possibility we can go 50 feet. Is that a possibility? I know there's not an answer, but that's what we're looking for just to protect our houses. And I mean, just, you know, something's coming, we know, we just want to protect what we've got. So, the more space we have, the happier we will be. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I appreciate you letting me speak. My name is Rob Lyon. I live at 213 Shorebreeze Drive, which is off of Salem Church Road. Again, reiterate his comments. We know that a development is coming. We know we probably can't stop it. The main concern is the traffic. I have lived off of Salem Church Road for 14 years now and witnessed accident over accident over accident, to where before we got the stoplight at Salem Church, we had such a bad accident that I had to call the church to open the gates to allow residents of Salem Church Road to get to their homes. I don't know what the planned proposal is, but a three-lane isn't gonna cut it. We need a larger road connecting the dam to where Walgreens is, and of course, then it's just gonna bottleneck up into Ballantyne. I'm not opposed to the development, and I'm not opposed to the growth of Irma. I've been a lifelong resident, born and raised in Irma. My dad is a former mayor of Irma. I love this town. That's the reason I chose to stay in this town. I love everything about it. I just think consideration needs to be taken to account for the traffic that this development is going to bring, the multiple accidents and deaths that could potentially happen as you're getting construction going in and out, in and out. The other thing I'd like to mention is the infrastructure, as the residents of Emerald Cove were talking about. Several people, including someone who's building down for me, can't even get onto blue granite because it's so tapped out. So, what is this development gonna do? What's gonna happen? Every year, blue granite goes up on our rates. We're paying over $100 a year, not for water, just for septic, just septic. So, I just wish y'all would take these things into account. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. I would like to apologize for my phone going off. That was my daughter, who's 40 weeks pregnant. Peg, you might want to step out and call her. Thank you. She lives in Dallas, so I apologize for that. I probably should have taken the call. Okay. So, I didn't even know you could go 40 weeks pregnant. What do I know? All right, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We are now gonna move on to new business. First reading of Ordinance 2412 to approve a development agreement, and again, that's the development agreement, for the Water Walk development pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act, authorizing, authorizing the Town of Irma to execute said development agreement. This will approve the contract between the property owner and the Town of Irma, which covers the development of the Water Walk subdivision. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I would, Doug, I want to come to you if we don't get this covered on this end, so please be on the ready. Don't let it slip from me. Eric, if you would go ahead and start the conversation?
So, a lot of my thoughts, Mayor, if you'll, if you'll allow, are going to be kind of a blend between the development agreement and the rezoning, because it's tough to parse them separately as individual issues, although they are separate ordinances. It's just simpler to put it all out there at the same time. So, I really want to make sure that as we discuss this as a council and as the public watches online or in person, that we're talking about the same things, and that we're aligned about what, what the options are, what is actually up for a vote, and what we're making decisions on. So, Doug, I have a couple of questions for you. If, so, we're, it's the development agreement, which is a new part of our process, is part of the negotiated district, but also large developments in general, and a rezoning. So, if the Town Council votes yes today and yes next time on both the development agreement and the rezoning, what happens next after that from a development process?
At that time, the, the developers would start working on finalizing the purchase of the property from the current owners. And then, once that happens, then they begin the development process. And so, and one of the reasons I know it's coming up a lot tonight, you know, why hasn't the traffic study been done, mainly because this portion of the process is vital to being able to move forward with the development agreement and with the rezoning. They are now granted vested rights in order to do the project they wish to do, but it's also the least expensive. It costs a lot of money to do surveys. It costs a lot of money to do wetlands surveys. It costs a lot of money to do the traffic study. And so, this is the first step of numerous steps. They would have to do that traffic study, and that, well, let me rephrase that. Last month, we passed the Traffic Impact Analysis Ordinance. And so, what that means is that when they are ready to do a traffic study, the town will find our traffic engineer, which we have done an RFQ on, and we should have a traffic engineer selected by next month. We would hire that traffic engineer to do the traffic impact analysis. The developer would pay for that, but we'll be the ones negotiating with the engineer and with DOT to ensure that the plan that comes out of that, based on the number of units they're looking at building, the timing of when that's built, the amount of commercial that they're building, all of that is wrapped up in that traffic impact analysis. So, that will determine what road improvements they have to do and the timing of those improvements. It may be that, you know, all improvements need to be made prior to the first, you know, before any work is done out there. There may be other timings, you know, maybe, you know, you're allowed to have 100 certificates of occupancy out there, and then, you know, but that's all unknown at this time. But once the traffic impact analysis is done, and then they've done the surveys, they've started designing the actual layout, those plaits then come back to staff to be approved. Through all of this, they're working through county stormwater to determine, okay, this is how many lots we are gonna have. This is the amount of impervious surface that we're gonna have. This is how stormwater works. And so, a lot of different agencies are gonna be involved over the next year at least. We may see, you know, trees coming down, but even that won't even happen until the land disturbance permits have been issued and the stormwater's been approved.
So, I think, without, because I think that's a good place to pause. So, you know, it kind of paints a picture of what people might see happen. So, if council votes yes today and next month on both, that doesn't mean that the day after our second vote, where suddenly there's 20,000 large machines on Salem Church and clearcutting happening. Is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be a very long time.
So, if council votes no today, and, well, if council votes no, then what, I don't mean from a developer perspective, because obviously that's a little different for them. But if council votes no, what, it's my understanding that 500 some odd units or more can still be built on the property in question, right?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the concerns that I had brought to me, kind of as a theme, was Murray Landing, the Publix Center there, and folks saying, well, that didn't turn out as promised. You know, the developer came in and they said all this stuff, and then the finished project was, product was different than how it was originally presented. And my answer to those folks is, we're a different town than we were when Murray Landing was built. We didn't have a development agreement, and we certainly didn't have this thorough of a process in vetting upfront and the experience from the last five or 10 years of some of these other projects. Is there anything else that you would say to folks who are concerned about the project turning out completely different than how it's been proposed? I'm talking stark difference from the original proposal.
Right. So, the way that our developed, our negotiated districts work is that staff has been working with the applicant since, I think, April or May on this project. We've gone through a number of iterations of what this project would look like, the maximum number of units, what houses would look like, all of that sort of stuff. And what all gets tied back into is this development agreement and this descriptive statement. statement. What, should council approve this, we will have a signed contract with the applicant stating that there will be no more than, you know, five hundred, five hundred and fifty units, period, residential units. There will be no more than X number of townhomes. There will be no more than X number of, you know, rentals versus for-sale units. The landscaping is all laid out. The architectural details of the houses are all laid out, the exterior materials, the number of house plans. All of these things are contractually obligated. And at every step, in order to move on, those things need to be signed off by staff, such as plaits. So if they bring on a plat with six hundred units, it can't be signed off on. And so they can't go forward. Now, what they, there are such things as minor amendments and major amendments, that kind of goes back to that stark difference. A minor amendment might be, oh, we thought there was going to be two entrances here, but actually there's gonna be three. Or, you know, we wanted to do five hundred units, can we do five hundred and ten? These are minor amendments. But anything that requires, that really changes the nature of the development, and that change is actually determined by staff, by the zoning administrator, it would require a full rezoning. So it requires to go back to planning commission, back to council, having all the public hearings. And so it's extraordinarily difficult to make those stark changes because there's a contract stating this is the development that you will build.
Thank you. There's a lot of folks that are concerned about traffic. My understanding that our code says multifamily must be on a four-lane road, one of which is a turn lane, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So if this project moves forward, will Salem Church Road, will this whole project be completed and done, and everyone's moved in, and it's a two-lane road on Salem Church?
Cannot be per our code.
Right. This was zoned, actually, I think I'm just gonna transition to a little bit of narrative, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. As a council, and this has been, if you've seen me on Facebook, this is something that I have put a ton of time and energy into, a lot of, whether or not you care about that, but a lot of investment in trying to make sure that we do the right things for the town. Because as a council, our job is to operate in good faith, supporting and defending the state constitution, U.S. Constitution, and be fair and impartial. Sure, use our experiences, use our informed opinions, but to be fair and impartial. That land has been sitting vacant since two thousand and eight, available for purchase sometime since then. And while I have some degree of autonomy on my land, I really don't have the right to tell someone else what to do with their land within the rights and bounds of the law. I think we can all, many of us can agree that we would like to see green space protected. We want to enhance our tree canopy and prevent unneeded impervious services. So what we're presented with as a council is the option to leave the zoning as it is, which, as you heard our zoning administrator say earlier, it still means they can still build a significant number of units, or to rezone into a negotiated district, which offers us as a town and you as our town residents, the ability to dictate parameters, to set thresholds and ceilings, and hold the developer accountable. So when someone wants to build, they do not have to build a product that you and I find visually appealing, or the layout is visually appealing. That is not the extent to which Irma government dictates to developers specifically how things must look and feel. But what we do is set a baseline, and we say, no more than X number of units, and you have to have roads up to code, and, you know, driveways have to be, can't be ten inches wide, right? Like, we have those baseline parameters. And unfortunately, some builders build too spec on those parameters and nothing more and nothing less. So you get three hundred boxes that all look the same. And what this is offering us, the opportunity as a council to do, is to say, we do not want three hundred boxes that look the same. If a large development's going to come in, it had better look good, it better be appealing, and it had better be the kind of neighborhood that, if I don't want to move into it, my mom might, or my sister might. Unfortunately, this project's on Salem Church Road, which obviously, I think we can all agree, needs widening. And it's further congested due to twenty and twenty-six, as the gentlelady said earlier, and broad still being two lanes. So I expect that as a council, that we'll create a condition to ensure that occupancy is limited to a particular number before that road is widened, before, to ensure that that road is widened before wide occupancy happens. The only choices that we have as a council, in my opinion, if we are operating in good faith, is up or down, yes or no. And the better outcome, in my opinion, is a yes vote, because it offers potential new owners more of what they want, a better product, and it gives the town protection to hold developers accountable and to prevent folks operating in bad faith. And to those who say, just stop it, just somehow raise a flag and say, you're not allowed to do it, how? With the exception of operating in bad faith as a government, by stepping away from being fair and impartial, by adding unreasonable requirements, or by burying the developer in red tape, there really isn't a fair, reasonable, and lawful mechanism to just make it go away. So if that's the case, the onus is on us as a council to make sure that we set the right parameters, as conditions, and put a lot of faith and have many conversations with our zoning administrator to protect the best interests of the town. I want to, I'll do have more, but I'll...
Okay. Council one?
I'm not sure how much more I can add to what Councilman Sickinger has just said, but again, keep in mind, this is a contractual agreement with the developer. They will have to do what they say they're going to do in the contract in order to be approved and in order to move forward. And also, in terms of density, remember that these are maximum numbers of units they're proposing to build on these sections of, these residential sections. If, as they're going through the process, they're setting out their plaits and they're finding that they can't fit as many units into that area, because they need the streets, they need the sidewalks, they need the green spaces, then those numbers will be less than the maximum. So again, just keep those things in mind.
Thank you. Council one?
And thank you, Eric, because you clarified some things that I did have questions on. I, I'm still conflicted, because A, this is my first time seeing a development from scratch coming into fruition ever in my life, because, you know, for the first time, I'm paying attention to that kind of process as part of my duties. The other part is, I heard some, for me, also being a lifelong and generational resident of this town, some of the same sentiment I feel when I do see developments come in is, my basic thing is, who are we as a town? Who do we want to be and look like twenty, thirty years, a generation from now? And you kind of referenced it, we're not the council that was before, but the thing is, are we as good a council with that kind of vision I'm talking, that could be for, you know, when we're not around anymore? And that's where, you know, I'm struggling a little bit. And Doug, my thing is with that first, with that first phase, is I'm not feeling comfortable with a hundred and sixty rental units. I don't know if we have, you know, you referenced that we might not have the ability to say what you can and cannot do. I would like to see it more sixty, forty split in favor of homeowners. I have no problem with giving, you know, access to renters, but having been one before, I know that when I was renting, I didn't have the same sense of commitment, I didn't pay attention. I wanted to be safe, I wanted to be pretty, I wanted to be close to things I liked, but I wasn't thinking of it as home, or worried about what's gonna happen, because I'm looking to move on, or I'm looking to that newer apartment building that my friends are telling me about. And I want people who move here to be of Irma and really, really love it and want to raise their children and entice other friends to come and live and lay down their roots. And because I haven't, for me, I can't speak to the rest of the council, I haven't read through the agreement enough and asked all my questions and so forth, so I guess in all of those words, I'm trying to say, I have faith that you've done your due diligence. It's about me as a person and as a council person feeling comfortable with making a decision on a development that may or may not turn out to be what I thought it was gonna be. And whether that's a lack of describing it enough, showing me enough pictures, I don't know. But those are the kind of questions I have, but mainly is, do, I would like to, I guess, put forth an amendment, if it is possible, that we say that first, that first phase be a percentage no less than sixty percent homeowners. I don't, if that is a possibility. And it could be we can't, but that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I would say in general, I don't think that towns can dictate ownership. There are, there are ways to do that. I mean, in the covenants, things of that sort. But in general, it... If I'm remembering correctly, you own your home, you may choose to rent it out. That is your choice. And so that's basically the choice that this developer is making to do a rental. I would say, however, even though the numbers look, you know, very, very rental oriented, I would, to me, the senior living portion, I kind of pull out of that. If you look at just the R1 and the R2, you have your for-sale unit, I think it's a hundred and forty units along Muscat Run, a hundred and sixty units in the R1. So it's roughly fifty-fifty, fifty-five, forty-five, something like that, between rentals and ownership. The senior living, to me, is not so much a rental neighborhood as it is a commercial enterprise, you know? Especially if it's an assisted living, but it may be, you know, independent living, it may just be senior-oriented housing. But it's almost a completely separate animal. It's a sense of like, oh, I'm sixty-five years old, I need to go to a place where everything's taken care of for me. I know a place like Alphatac and my mother, you know, to me, it's not so much, you know, it is a residential neighborhood, but it's almost a different, completely different thing. And so in that sense, I almost see R1 and R2 as being, you know, half rental, half ownership, and oh, by the way, there's a senior living facility as well than the commercial. And that's kind of why there's four pods. And so I think that, you know, when you frame it that way, it's like, okay, you know, half and half. And admittedly, there are a lot of all rental neighborhoods, especially coming up. You know, we're seeing American Homes for Rent, you know, making a neighborhood with two hundred rental units. But to reflect back on what the mayor was saying, I've seen those neighborhoods with two hundred of the exact same house. And what we're doing, what the applicant is, you know, speaking about here, is having a number of different house plans, having townhouses and regular houses, having large green space areas, all that kind of stuff. And so it's all rental. It may not be where we want to live, but I think it's very different than what could very easily happen over there.
And I don't want the developer to think that I'm anti the development. It's just, again, it's about the ratio of renters versus homeowners from the, you know, it can be all pretty buildings, but that doesn't necessarily mean the people inside kind of give a hoot about Irma. That's, that's the concern I have, so. And maybe that never gets dictated by homeownership versus renters, I don't know. I just, I can only go by my own experience as a homeowner versus a renter. So that's all I had to say, Bill. I'm done.
Thank you.
I was just saying, still quicker than me.
Okay. Councilman Panfield?
I'm the newest person up here, and so that means I'm supposed to be enthusiastic and chipper and naive about how things can be better. I'm not. Almost borderline jaded. Nothing happens with the roads until two or three people die. There's a part of me that just says we should stack as much as we can in the same area because we know, we all know that the DOT is only reactive. And I think that's, it goes without saying. I concur with, if we don't take action, then anything goes, and we end up in the vinyl village. If we allow this, then we have great influence, and we have not just a good faith commitment by the developer, but we have a contractual agreement, and we also have legal counsel to back it up. My thoughts on it are that I'm very regretful that the people who are affected negatively have to endure unpleasant change, and that in the interim, while we're waiting for DOT to respond positively, we're all gonna be sitting in the same traffic. I drive through every day. Our mayor lives across the street from it, so we're all suffering together. Whereas a council's supposed to make decisions that represent the citizens, whether they elect us or not, whether we're providing leadership just in the town limits or not. I'm not overly concerned with that. We have to make a decision that takes into account all the citizens. And the question, is it good for the greater good? Comes down to not a question of the lesser of two evils, but is this gonna be something that brings people to this area? One of the things that I said over and over and over again when I was running for this seat is that Greenville feels like the new Charleston, because it's run by business people, and it's innovative, and it's new, and they try different things. And this area has historically felt stagnant and complacent, because it's run by bureaucracy and nothing ever changes or nothing gets done, there's no innovation. So, you know, my posture on this is consistent with the promise that I made, you know, when I asked to be in this role, was to make things better, to make things possibly new and different. And obviously, that's gonna be at the detriment of some people, hopefully to the benefit of everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment and question Doug about the traffic statement. And I do understand that the traffic is a pain point, but I think some, it seems like everybody thinks it's only the development that's gonna cause traffic issues, but we're sandwiched in between other developing areas and the freeway. So a lot of that traffic is happening because those municipalities are wanting to grow and expand. So my question to you is, are we having a conversation with them to at least put pressure on the DOT as two or three municipalities, as opposed to it just being us? Because we're behaving like all the traffic is generated by Irma residents, when really a lot of it is passed through traffic that we have to suffer with? Or at least that's my, that's my observation. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Unlike some of my council members up here, I have a, I have a lot to say on this subject. I'll try to do it in a very professional way. And, you know, we are, we are, yes, we're elected officials, so I guess that makes us politicians. I've said for a hundred times, I'm not a politician, I'm a businessman. Sometimes a good one, sometimes not a good one, right? We all make mistakes. And I bring the business approach to this, to this council. I also have been in street fights, legal fights, every place you can be, from a businessman's perspective, all right? When I say street fights, I don't mean literally I'm in the street fighting. From every avenue that you can, can, can be in. This guy is not gonna be intimidated by any of the unruly noise on Facebook and in here. I've heard a couple of things tonight, there's a magical slush fund. It's insulting and offensive. If you want to know what that's about, I will be happy to let you know. You're not gonna find me on Facebook, I leave that to these two to my left. You want something, you want an answer, you call me on my phone. It's right here, you just heard it go off. Eight oh three, seven, uh, what is my number, Peg? Six oh six, four nine nine one. I was gonna give you Peg's number. Eight oh three, six oh six, four nine nine one. I don't hide. I'm right here, and I'll be happy to talk to anybody about it. I also heard a challenge thrown out tonight that I also find offensive. I am on the cog. I am the cog's representative. I've been on the cog for eight months, and I am putting more pressure on the people at the cog than any of you in this room would even imagine. And it's like an ant moving an elephant's ass, okay? It's just the way it is. So I don't think, I take offense to those kind of comments. These people are all way too nice to take offense, but I do take offense. These people are all way too nice to take offense, but I do take offense. So, I am telling you, when you want to know the truth, you just have to ask us. If we approve this, and frankly, I was not a fan of this, of this whole thing, not a fan. And I hear traffic, 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 traffic. I'm going to flip this over and, Mr. Hall, I'm one of your neighbors, did you know that?
No.
No. I live on Sawyer Court, all the way in the back. I have to come out of that subdivision every day. I live in the middle of this. I don't need to have traffic explained to me, okay? Unlike most of you who don't even live in Irma and vote in Irma, I live in the heart of Irma and I have to deal with it. I'm not on Marina Road or in Chapin or wherever. I'm dealing with this every day. The folks in Muskrat, those folks, I'm going to listen more to them than I am to you frankly, but we're going to take it into consideration because we always do. We turned down a project a year and a half ago because of the folks in Rice Field and a couple, in Windhurst, because of the negative impact on them and we turned it down. So we do listen to all of our citizens, even though they're not the voting citizens. But every time someone makes a comment, it's offensive and you are, and you are pushing me in another direction. It's really clear. Now, I want to make it, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to those of you who are earnestly looking to gather information. I'm going to go back and I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what Eric said. What has to happen? All we're doing here, if we approve, is allowing these, this development group, who I've never met until they came to the table here, allowing this development group to move forward. And by moving forward, that means the hundreds of thousands of dollars they've got to spend in due diligence, all right? Now, what can stop this project if we approve it? Everything. Everything. No place to crap, no place to pee, no place to get your water from. I'm trying to make this as basic as possible. Not trying to be insulting, I'm just trying to break it all down, right? No place for any of that to go, no streets, no widening of the roads, nowhere for traffic to go, and we all sit out there in the parking lot. Now, I agree with Mr. Hall. My wife has had to make a right-hand turn on Drea Shoals to go to Publix, but not me. Because I'm an aggressive driver, just like you're seeing me right now. You see that red Audi coming? Get out of the way. Okay? The reality is, I know what's going on, we know what's going on. And, and now it's become, with the offensive, offensive challenges, it's become, it's become a personal thing and I'm trying not to let it get there. There are any number of things that'll stop this. The highway department, SC DOT, the cog, the cog, the cog. Do any of you know who runs, how the cog operates? It's 20 years behind anything we are doing right now. And literally, I have the documentation that they tried to widen the road 15 years ago on Drea Shoals and everybody said no. I have the emails, right? So here we are. Everybody wants infrastructure. I don't want anything to go on that road without improvement status, from a personal and a business and a council standpoint. I worry about my wife every time she pulls out of the subdivision, right? Because she doesn't drive like me. I worry about the people who may or may not be passing through there, but you know what the one thing I have found? The one thing I have found that all of a sudden, it seems to me, I've been in, in and around Irma for 38 years, it seems that people are friendlier driving their cars out there right now. Letting people out of the street, stopping, letting people go, waving you ahead when you can't see the oncoming. So that's, that's one of the positives. What else can stop this project? DOT, changes in the topography, changes in their plat plans, any type of engineering, traffic study? Their own market study that they're going to have to spend tens of thousands of dollars on may tell them, and I agree with everything you've said, not a fan of the rentals, that may tell them the market's not there for 160 nice rental cottages. But I can tell you, it's going on everywhere else. And the reason Irma has adopted a negotiated district is to be ahead of all of the other municipalities and counties in our area. They are looking very closely at what we are doing because they're wanting to see how that is working and what we're doing to make that happen. All this development agreement is going to do tonight is allow them to move forward and we will continue to button that up and amend that and fix that and tighten the things they have to do. We have some conditions that we want to have them do. By the second reading, those will be clearly in hand, we will have negotiated out. All you're allowing to do is you're allowing this town to move forward, to continue negotiations with these folks and developing the agreement and then the rezoning, which is secondary. And the last thing I want to say about this, well, two things. All of this, and I don't hear anybody, anybody speaking on behalf of the owners of the 65 acres. They have every right to sell their property and cash in after 100 years or whatever many number of years they've had that without undue government overreach and undue government regulations. I am a non, I am not a government guy, and I know that seems foolish sitting up here, but I am a small government guy. I see what it's done to small business, which is my wheelhouse, my professional life, and it's, it's, it's horrible. So, nobody is speaking on their behalf. Well, there's one guy, he represents him because he's going to get a brokerage fee out of it, but that's beside the point. You know, nobody's speaking on their behalf. That's in their bundle of rights. They have the right to sell that property. Now, is it perfect? No, it's not going to be perfect. Can it crash and crater at any point? Yes. Will there be timeframes? Yes. Will, will zoning go back to the original zoning within a period of time that we will negotiate with these guys? Yes. Goes back to the original zoning, somebody can put 700 apartments in there without coming to this body. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Doug. I want to break this down into very rudimentary communication. If we don't do this, if we don't approve this and work with these guys or any other development group, guys and gals, we are going to be stuck. They don't have to come to us. Now, the, by the grace of God, they will have to jump through the traffic, infrastructure, wetlands, environmental, all of the things these folks have to. We've got eagles nesting down there on that lake. Dominion will be involved, right? I mean, wildlife has to be involved. All of these hoops can crater. So we're going through all of this angst and I understand it, I get it. It's angst for it's something that may or may not happen. And I won't embarrass them by asking them to stand up and agree with me, but they will agree with me that at any point, they can walk away from this deal until they close on the land. And we're going to require them to do that within a period of time, which will be part of this agreement that we have with these, with this group. They have been very open to negotiate and they haven't been unreasonable. So I hope that if you take anything from this, is that this is all about improving the town of Irma and bringing folks, having a place for folks to live. There's also another challenge out there, for if somebody on the council is so hepped up about this project, will you move in there? Hell yeah, I'll move in there. I'm ready to move now. Now, I just have to move across the street. I'd be happy to move in there, right? And I think I knew somebody else who might move in there, but that's beside the point. The reality is, it's not what's best for Bill Danielson or Gabe or Eric, it's what's best for the town and it's coming whether we control it or not. And we are trying our damnedest to control this thing and with unreasonable and legal maneuvering. So, let's keep, let's keep our heads in the game, let's push in one direction and we, we take, you know, we will take all the feedback that you offer, but the, the, the problem is us doing nothing creates a bigger problem. And I wish I was here in, on council in 2007, 2008. This wouldn't, I would like to think it wouldn't have happened, but the owners wanted it that way and that's what they decided to zone it. So we're, we, we're dealing with it. We are tightening it up. So, my attitude towards this project has changed a little bit because I'm worried about the alternative.
Thanks, Bill. Hopefully you can tell that we've, we have a lot to say because we've, we've had a lot of conversations, we've put a lot of thought into this. I had a couple of things that I just kind of wanted to put on the, pin on the tail end here. First, to your point, Mayor, that what I would call the 2008 move to make it general residential, that was partially due to the fact that the town did not have a great land use plan as part of their comprehensive plan. And then the town puts all that together and puts it out to the public and a bunch of people say, how dare you? Plan for how this land is going to be used, it's not even in the town of Irma. Yeah, that's the point, so that we don't have a repeat of what happened in 2008, right? We want to have, where should things go? Where should they not go? What kinds of things should go there? Let me stay on target. I saw on Facebook, and I only say this because I think it's a reflection of how some people, how they interpret and see things, and someone said, you know, 500 units, that's 1,000 cars. And that's 1,000 cars at the road at the same time. And I, I think that's not a unreasonable thing for someone that's not in this world to think, but the reality is that there is a handbook that's publicly available, ITE, and Doug, please interject if I get this wrong, but generally, we're talking about 60% of the units in single family being, being on the road in peak hour PM traffic. So, 300, let's call it 300 because 200's 55 plus or senior living, whatever it's going to end up. So of that 300, that means 150, 175 more cars on the road over the course of an hour at peak PM, which means 40, 50, 60 cars over 15 minutes. And with the addition of the widening of the road and hopefully a middle turn lane, which has been my champion cause, should save a lot of problems. I can't believe that that road is still too late. I wanted to state out loud today, and everyone that I've talked with about this, I've said this a dozen times, I want to put conditions on this approval. However, I think, I'm going to state what my expected outcome of the conditions are, but these are not being offered as amendments today, but just so that you can hear what the, what my plan and in conjunction with the mayor and council members, one at a time, in terms of what's important for these conditions. And so we're going to discuss this further in workshop and the goal is not to be owners from the developer, but at the same time, protecting the things that I think we all hold dear. So, that is land for Irma Fire Department for a station out there, that protection of heavy traffic and equipment on Route 6 in terms of making sure that they aren't sitting out there with a bulldozer at 6:00 PM on a Friday, right? Trying to cross the lanes and come back and forth. Public access to the public areas and concerns and restrictions around the for sale section and ensuring that those are for sale to the public like MLS and not just for sale, you know, to a corporate conglomerate. I have concerns around that with like FHA and VA, just to make sure that it qualifies the requirements for someone that would want to use a VA loan to be able to get that. The last thing I want to say is that when you hear a rental, many of us automatically categorize things. It's a common thing that we do to make life make sense and to just keep moving. The reality is that what's being proposed is not what many of us think of when we hear rentals. It's called build to rent and it's really a segment in and of itself. And I'm not doing an advertisement for build to rent, but it's a distinct kind of rental. The closest thing that I can find anywhere in the Midlands would be Leo, Leo at Augusta Commons, which has been around since 2016 and it's really nice. I have friends that have wanted to live over there. The other distinction that I think about build to rent is that the average occupancy is closer to four years versus closer to 16 months for a standard rental that we think of when we think of rentals. It really is kind of a different impact and different lifestyle and different setup and design than what many of us think of when we think of just a rental. I think that covers it all.
Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing none, we're in it. Will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Next up, first reading of ordinance 2413 to rezone 11 properties totaling 65.12 acres of real property located at the intersection of Drea Shoals Road, Salem Church Road and Muskrat Run from CG General Commercial, RG General Residential and FA Fringe Agriculture to MD Mixed Use and to amend the official zoning map of the town of Irma so to, to also reflect. This will rezone the subject property to the mixed use zone as described in the Water Walk Development Agreement and narrative statement. Do I hear a motion? Does it move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I will call for discussion. Councilman Sickinger, is there anything additional?
I don't think there's anything else I could say.
I think we've already covered this discussion.
Okay.
Satisfied.
All right. Councilman?
Gabe.
Okay. Well, I do, but I won't. All right. So Renee, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Now, next item up, approval to contract with the Archer Company for a classification and compensation study for employees in the amount of $16,500. Authorizes the town to enter into a contract with Archer to perform a classification and compensation study for the employees of the town of Irma. Is there a motion? Does it move?
Second.
All right, having been appropriately motioned, I would, it would be all right if I would defer right to Doug, if you could give us an up-to-date discussion on this?
Sure. So doing a compensation and classification study was part of the strategic plan that council adopted about six months ago. And so we put out an RFQ and about a month and a half ago, two months ago, we received 10 bids back and Archer was by far the least expensive. I called about five different cities that have used Archer in the recent past to, you know, do a background check, I'll have to go on them, see how they did. And overwhelmingly, everyone who worked with Archer was very, very happy with their process. Many, I'm talking with, I think, North Augusta, they said they actually engage with them every year. They just have a standard contract with them. Every time they bring on a new position, every time they, you know, make any changes to personnel, things go through Archer. That's not our intent right now, but it sounds like they are a very good firm, very well respected. They are very, very active in South Carolina and they actually did our last compensation study about 14 years ago. And so they are familiar with us, they wrote a number of our job descriptions. I think that's actually why we got a lower price with them because we're already in their system and we're a repeat customer. So there was a number of reasons why they looked to be the best option for us.
Okay. Questions? No, I just, this isn't really my, my ballpark, so I'd love to hear maybe Mayor, why we're doing this. What's the, what's the goal?
Sure. As we know, we're in a very competitive world. We've had turnover here in the four years that I've been on, well, four, hmm, pushing five, that I've been on council, we've had, we've had over, pretty, over 100% turnover in our administrative offices, right? And we still have key people there who have been there. Employees come and go. We, we deal with this with the, with our police department. We, we've, we've done numerous financial incentives and raises and bonuses and subsidies for our police men and women and as soon as we-
And as soon as we do it, our competition does it right behind us, right? So we were competing in this, we're competing in the same market. One of our key folks, we just, we just hired, not police-related, um, and very good at what she does, business licensing and all of that. She didn't just walk in off the street. We stole her from Newberry. I mean, this is a very competitive business, and we want the best of the folks that we can get. And the only way we can do that is know how we, how we shore up and how we compare to our competition. And we want to be ahead of them, even if it's a smidge, because Ermo's such a great place to live. We got them all beat with that, but even, we have to be competitive. I think fourteen years, way too long between these studies. Um, do we want to spend sixteen thousand dollars? No, but I've looked and I've double-checked, and these are normally done for thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars from what I can see. So it's money well spent. If it saves us one employee from turning over, one employee, it's well worth that. So that's why we're, that's why we're doing that. I'll take any comments from the council?
I was just, I was just curious that it can't be dropped in A I and it'll spin up the study back?
Okay. Okay, with that, uh, Renee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Okay, item eleven, um, back to presentation by citizens. Uh, the only person who is on this is Mr. Jeff Hall. Did you want to come up again?
No, sorry, it's my first time here, Mayor.
Uh, that's okay, you can come up again. I'm, I'm happy to hear what you have to say, because you suffer the same misery I do.
No, it's our first time.
Okay, well, welcome, welcome. Uh, no one else has signed up? If anybody else would like to speak, this is the time to do it. Hearing none, seeing none, um, we will move on to discussion. We've pretty much discussed everything, we don't have anything additional. Um, and folks, I will take a motion to go into executive session. Before we do that, uh, town council may act on items discussed in the executive session after returning from the executive session. We're going in for a contractual matter, discussions of negotiations incident, incident to a proposed contractual agreement for the new town hall project, uh, discussion on the purchase of a narcotics, uh, enforcement vehicle, and then a legal matter, discussion regarding the Water Walk lawsuit. So I'll take a motion? Moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, let's go. We'll be back, folks.
Okay.
Even the, even the guys with the bull, I tell them, I think they were coming early. They're telling me to clear it, but I'm like, I'm like, I think I can do it now. It needs like, they're telling me it's gonna be a horse. And now the water flow coming from the sewer, which nothing's so slow up there. If you're gonna bounce a little. It was, it was, it was, it was twenty, twenty four. So I'll look that up. The name of it, so you have. Yeah. See, I think, um, it's still with water. We, um, it's five percent, um, it's about a little bit, it's done, they're on the south.
I swirled, I swirled, uh, my concentration. Yeah, I just kind of spooked it, I spooked it back and, and all the health. All the health thing that we built, I stole, I did a lot of people's.
I always had the pretty much coated it for me.
Oh, okay.
It was literally the last way.
Really?
I, I don't know, like, I don't know if his transmission could fuel, um, like. But if, but that happens, probably, yeah, we're not, we're not pouring money. Absolutely, guys, it's a little much. Cakes, I mean, nobody, you know, that's all, just all sort of watch. Yeah. John said, ask, sort of, on the end, something, somebody, you know, because the problem was living there. You know, he meant that there's. And then they're throwing underneath, they're like, they're drooling. So we had to get like the money, but see all that. But it's. Oh, yeah. No, off the park, you can do it off the park, that's not boring, you're not going up there. Yeah. That's the same as the. This way, this way. We've got two hurdles, just, they line up. In position, yeah, that's a lot. Right. I mean, I hope we don't. It's minimal, it's ninety something degrees out. Plan work that out. Three minutes back to back. That will be sort of, that is all for that. Don't want, by the way. We were like, you know, because we went to the lunch the other day. Have a train, a conference, go there, not let. It's the first weekend this ever been ordered, say. Oh, no, that's, yeah. But then I get the two of them together. Well, the com- the conferences, that's really speaking. Um. Yeah, a lot of, that's probably.
It was like a loud, like.
It's probably, it's really less. We knew you said, you think I'm a. I don't hear nothing. Yeah. Right. Couple of same. Drive the water, we're in a, she, she's, where's the market? Oh, who was that?
The first thing in the morning, he's like.
I think you're gonna be gone, or. I've, I've been, I've got a giant. Have you seen? Sitting on a tree. Comes in. He's hanging out there, or maybe he'll jump over on the other side. Yeah, he came from under here, yeah. Jumped over. Where you get some. Okay. I put the deer trail. I turned on the alarm, it's a little bit just bad, you know. Yeah. You have cheese. And salad. One, one of the dogs good. We're going next to it, it's all, it's not ready to go. Feel, it kept, it kept going on my. And then untied on his sign that says, I've died. On the other day, I had been in the yard all day. And I, I showered, I get a note, he's. Cheese on you, you know, so like, I put out, old dude sitting on his cooler, I got a two, eighty year old woman hanging up her deer life on the ground. It's going like this, and, um, like, it's, it's very good. I got her on top. There you go. Really? How did you not know? But it's such a liability, because. It gets hurt. You know? Even with a different sign. Getting away from the crap in the house. Counting. It was like, oh, like, bitch, I was like, God, I'm such a fool. So, so Joe was out there. He was, yeah, since it's the owner, Jersey, the home now. So, he called him, and, you know, it's like, you know, the guy was, you know, the sixteen. Or, you know, you know, which sounds like one. Hey, mom, they, yeah. Ordered a team. I ordered some of his food from T M. Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Well, six zero probably. You know. The smell of my cheese. Why don't you start to, or, or, or. And then you're calm, so. Single son looks taken away. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Living in a, in fact, he's not coming there, that's why. Unbelievable. Yeah, then it was. That's what we, sorry. It's like, you know, you. That's what's gonna happen. Well, I mean, it's, but it's still, of course.
Yeah.
We're friends. Yeah. It was full, over, it was a, it was a whole, whole. There we go.
Ready to go.
So, that's, there's. I mean, so that's, I just learned one of them, like, okay. Does that waste when you turn the picture stuff? The small probably. Green. I saw Ty with his morning, they were coming up, we're already down, and once, just off, like, he can pick up napes across the range, and one of those, and part of us, it is, because he's part of us. He's on this one. Totally celebrating the war. They don't need to celebrate. We didn't have any purpose for beer. We didn't blind. Thought I saw you up there. Yeah, it's not, the drunker is always gonna. Everything, everything's a beer, it goes seventy eight. There, you're told if you look. You're so tired, you're gonna go high and charm. Your left, so maybe you're char, trying to.
Just don't wear my shoes. He won't make it to our.
Make me a bigger cup, you know, and I mean. That's not me, I'm in truth here, so, I, I didn't feel good. It's all my plan, it's all, you know. I wanted that, that you sleep. For me, can you worry about? I was, that's. Yeah, you're not gonna have that right now. Yeah, that's, you know, we got some, it's like, I mean, it's false names, I mean. Hollowing your head. She found it, I, I first, I have an house. We'll keep that week. You know. I don't believe this, I don't believe this. What'd you say? But you can call that phone, and I can hear a phone.
So, so how do I wait a minute? Kind of like, I just thought like, you're so far.
I couldn't let it go, I had to go find that thing, because it was like, he was that close to the garage, he's gonna deliver, you know, some of this shit on. So, don't you, right, I found it, I went, I went, I went through the circle, circle, and picked him up, you know, so. Yeah, mother of all. Big pain, right? One, one, I know, I mean, too. Just like.
Sure. I know.
Jake, sure. Remember the red line, you're a good judge, after you go, oh, you got a red line, you go to the mall. That's how you get B P S. We have to check it every time he's in the. It's either a T C. That's the jury, oh, yeah, jury line. Yeah. It smells like a Disney. That's right.
There's a very different Disney brand smell, like, in your face.
Okay, folks, thanks for, um, sticking around, we are, um, coming back into session. We are going to, I'm looking for a motion.
Mm-hmm, uh, no votes were taken previously.
No votes were taken, correct.
But, uh, I wanna make a motion to approve the purchase of a narcotics enforcement vehicle for seventy two, seventy five.
Second. Having been appropriately, uh, motioned, uh.
Second.
And any, any further comments? Okay? All right, so Renee, will you call the roll on that, please?
Dr. Penfield.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Dr. Waldman.
Yes.
Mr. Siginger.
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson.
Yes. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, thank you.